Good evening, before we get started, I would like to welcome Pastor Jerry Dockery from Crab Apple First Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation. Thank you for being here tonight, too.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me, it's my privilege.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Lord, we are grateful for the institution of government that you have designed and provided in order that we might organize ourselves and further our own protection and efficiency in living together. I thank you for these people who serve our community. We ask that you give them wisdom and direction as they see about the affairs of this community. Lord, we are grateful for those in our community that serve as first responders and ask for your protection upon them and continue to bless them as they as well serve us in this capacity. We commit this meeting to you and ask that all things here might be done for our benefit, for our greater usefulness, and for your glory. And we offer this prayer in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, May 4th, 2015, to order. If our city clerk will please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 4th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance, please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coats.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. And with that, if Sudi, you would please call the agenda item.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 15-114.
Okay. One thing I believe we'd like to move, the new business agenda item, the consideration of appointment of a member of the Parks and Recreation Board to reports and presentations, or right after reports and presentations, move that up on the agenda. Is there anything council would like to move? Okay, I'll open up for motion on the agenda approval.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion that we accept the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion from Councilmember Morick, second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, that's unanimous. Okay. Sudi, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, let me read the rules real quick, then. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from either the public or from the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, I'll open up for public comment.
Our public comment this evening comes from Mr. Tom Foose, F-O-O-S.
Good evening. My name is Tom Foose. I live at 325 North Court, that's off of Crab Apple, in the Arbor North subdivision. There is a project that has been approved but not started yet that backs up to my property. It's called the Parkview Town Homes. I've talked to the mayor about this, and I thank him for that. But I have been attempting to get with the developer and find out how to resolve my issues. And although I have had a meeting with the developer, I tried to contact them twice last week and have not have them call. So here's what I'm looking for. I'm looking to sit down with someone from Milton that has decision-making powers, the developer, and myself, to discuss the issues that I have, and not just talk about them, but actually resolve these issues while we're together. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much, and I'm sure, Steph, if we can, we can...
I'll make the phone call myself.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, Sudi, if you'll read that.
Our first item under consent this evening, approval of the April 20th, 2015 City Council Work Session Minutes, agenda item number 15-115. Next, approval of a memorandum of understanding between Georgia Transmission Corporation and the City of Milton for an access easement and placement of a siren on the Highway 140, Substation Codelage, agenda item number 15-116. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and New South Construction Company, Inc., to provide pre-construction services for the design of the new City Hall facility, agenda item number 15-117. Our fourth item is approval of the acquisition of 102.95 square feet of right-of-way, 6,749.31 square feet of construction and maintenance easement, and 7,316.89 square feet of construction easement at Northwest Corner of the intersection of Brandy and Trail and La Coma Trace from the City of Milton for $69,600, agenda item number 15-118. Next, approval of the acquisition of 19.975 square feet of right-of-way and 2,831.492 square feet of construction and maintenance easement at 12690 Crab Apple Road from Perimeter Oil Company for a combined purchase price of $40,000, agenda item number 15-119. Our sixth consent agenda item is approval of the acquisition of 0.267 acres of right-of-way and 0.061 acres of construction and maintenance easement at 12655 Birmingham Highway from Danuta Watkins for a combined purchase price of $199,380, agenda item number 15-120. Our seventh and final consent agenda item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., for the construction of a roundabout at the Birmingham Road and Hopewell Road intersection, agenda item number 15-121.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. That passes unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item.
Our first item is a proclamation, Muscular Dystrophy Association, City of Milton firefighter appreciation. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Tonight, I'm honored to present a proclamation for the firefighter appreciation for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. The Muscular Dystrophy Association's proprietary Fill the Boot program is supported by fire departments across North America. The Simple Streetside Collection campaign provides an easy and convenient mechanism for commuting Americans to make a contribution to one of America's most beloved charities by America's most admired heroes, firefighters. This year marks 61 years for the American tradition. Since 1954, firefighters have raised $558 million for MDA. The public service resulting from this labor of love is nothing short of incredible. Over the last nine years, the City of Milton Fire Department has collected over $488,000 from generous citizens for local children and adults fighting muscular dystrophy. With approximately 125 patients registered in the City of Milton, the support of the fire department hits close to home. In 2014, the department raised $72,074, which was the highest in the metro Atlanta area and second largest in the state of Georgia. The City of Milton is currently in the middle of their 2015 campaign, and we look forward to another record-breaking year. Pamela Wheatley, the executive director in the Atlanta office, and Anna Montague, fundraising coordinator for MDA, are excited to support the department this year, this year after year, and are with us in the audience along with two families, Kyle Eggleston, who is the state goodwill ambassador, I said one family, and, sorry, I said two. Also, please welcome Chief Bob Edgar, who's in the back, and members of the Milton City Fire Department in the back room. And I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'm going to ask the folks in attendance here to come up, and we're going to present this along with the fire department. My proclamation, the MDA City of Milton firefighter appreciation. Whereas dedicated and selfless firefighters in Milton provide vital and life-saving services to the citizens of their communities, and whereas at a moment's notice, these men and women risk their lives subduing fires and rescuing those trapped in infernos, as well as saving citizens from emergencies that could have been deadly situations, and whereas Georgia firefighters contribute significantly to the continued well-being of Georgians through their outstanding commitment to community service. Their sense of duty and responsibility is evidenced by the hundreds of volunteer hours and annual boot drives to collect funds to fight muscular dystrophy. And whereas firefighters in the City of Milton unselfishly donate their time and energy to supporting the Muscular Dystrophy Association, raising more than 488,000 over our nine-year partnership, and whereas many of Milton's most deserving citizens have benefited from the funds raised by firefighters and the Fill the Boot campaign, and these public servants make invaluable contributions to the community in all the tasks they've performed. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton hereby proclaim April through September as MDA firefighter appreciation time in the City of Milton, and encourage all citizens of Milton, Georgia, to recognize and support the efforts of these firefighters on behalf of MDA, given under my hand and seal, the City of Milton on this fourth day of May 2015. So if I could ask the firefighters here, as well as families and folks that are here with MDA, to step up along with my counsel to make the spread. Okay. And thank all these firefighters for working so hard? Everybody, come on up here.
Can I have you guys scoot in as much as you can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you get his head as possible?
Can you get everybody up, you know, swing down a little?
Right.
You guys just go in a little bit?
That will work. All right, thank you, guys.
All right, now, I have a question. Do we have a fire truck here tonight? Is there any way, unless you guys already, if you guys already been out there?
We followed it in.
Well, how about this? Could these guys go get in the fire truck? And I don't know if they would let a little rider on the parking lot or something, but after we do that, you guys are going to have a little fun with the fire truck, okay? And thank you to all our firefighters who are out there giving their time and efforts to great cause. All right. All right. All right, and then I think we move this next item to report. Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District 3, Post 2, agenda item number 15-125. And I believe that goes to Councilmember Rick Morick.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure at night to introduce Phil Cranmer and recommend him for the open position and post. Phil has been with Halyard Health, formerly Kimberly Clark, for the last 15 years. He's currently a senior product manager. He's a graduate of St. Joseph's University out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. He also received his MBA from Kennesaw State University. He's originally from Southern New Jersey, and he is, and his family have lived in the Milton area for over 10 years now. He's married to his wife Christina for seven years, and he's here tonight with Christina and also his two daughters, the apple of his eye, Isabella and Felicity. Phil has been involved in his community, and he's served on his HOA board for a number of years. He loves sports and outdoors, and he currently is still playing competitive soccer. I think he'll be a strong addition to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and I'd like to ask the council's approval of Phil Cranmer for the open position.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to appoint Phil to this position.
Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District 3, Post 2.
Second. Okay. Now I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So I'll ask Phil to step forward, and we'll go ahead and swear again, and council's certainly welcome to join. Thank you for stepping up. You know, this is, we found out between zonings and sports, people are really, it's really important to say Milton, so you're going to hand out your number and all that. But I always, I got to say, we appreciate, you know, what makes Milton special and better, I think, is that we've got some Michigan volunteers who really care and help out, and it does make a big difference, so we appreciate it. So if you would raise your hand and swear after me, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member.
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member.
Board member. Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd love if you want to bring your family up here and get a picture. Hey, how are you doing? Did you guys see the big fire truck? You know, after this, y'all want to go out?
Joey sent a picture. I know, Sarah's jumping.
She's more interested in the microphone.
Thank you so much for, like, your dad, help out, okay? All the stuff you can play and watch in recreation, it'll make a big difference. All right, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Sudi, if we can move to our first presentation.
Our first presentation this evening, first, is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 15-122. Our second and final first presentation item this evening is consideration of RZ 15-10, to amend Article 7, Division 6, Section 64-1141, single-family uses as it relates to lot coverage. Agenda item number 15-123.
Okay. Mayor, I'll move to approve the reading of the first presentation item.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. We'll move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please sound that out.
Under public hearing this evening is consideration to study, adopt, an impact fee program for the City of Milton, agenda item number 15-124. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Michelle McIntosh Ross, Principal Planner, City of Milton Community Development. Good evening. Tonight, we're here to give the public due notice, the city is pursuing an impact fee study to assess the feasibility of implementing an impact fee program. We've hired a consultant, Bill Ross and Associates, to perform the study, and...
Here he is. Bill Ross, he will have a short presentation to let us know about the impact fee program.
Thank you, Michelle. I am Bill Ross with Ross Associates. This public hearing is actually a required public hearing by the state because ultimately, if you do move forward with impact fees, something called the capital improvements element will be adopted ultimately by you as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So we come under the state comprehensive planning requirements, as well, of course, as the impact fee acts. And the state requirements start us off with the kickoff public hearing, which is what this, what this is today. I will be short, which everyone says is very unusual for me. The agenda, we're going to talk about why are we here, what's the purpose of this meeting, introduce the consultant team, where are we in the process, so the public understands what's going on and where are we going, future meetings that will come along as the study proceeds, and open it up for, for public comments, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of the meeting, and this again is, is what the state wants us to do, we're not limited to this, but the purpose of the meeting is to talk about the process that we're following in developing the impact fee study. Now, there's no obligation ultimately to adopt impact fees. We're doing a study so that the city council knows where you are, what you can or can't do, what, what the positives and the negatives might be. Secondly, what are the opportunities for public participation, if people want to voice their opinions, one way or the other, in the process? And lastly, tonight, if anyone has any input about the planning process we're following, we're here to listen and, and interact. The consultant team, I put me first because I'm an egomaniac. I should have Kathy Field here first because she's leading the whole charge with her department. And of course, Michelle McIntosh Ross is, is providing constant input to us and interaction with us as the, as the process goes on. Amec Foster Wheeler is also involved with me as consultants to you. Paige Hatley is here with me. I told her she wouldn't be allowed to speak unless she just felt compelled to do so. This is difficult to see on the screen. It's our basic process that we're, that we're following. The green dot at the top was the, the assessment study that we had, we completed and discussed with you a while back. We are preparing the methodology report, which is the first blue box. Once the methodology report comes to you, we talk about it, we make changes as appropriate, we move on to that capital improvements element, which is the comprehensive plan part of the entire process. When the capital improvements element is complete to your liking, we have another public hearing to hear any comments people might have about the program, the CIE, or anything, and then you authorize it to be transmitted to ARC, and they will send a copy to the state for state and regional review. That takes anywhere from a month to a month and a half while they make sure that it meets all of the state law requirements. While that's going on, the yellow boxes will be working on the, the ordinance, the impact fee ordinance, that would put all of that into actual implementation. We will also be working with the staff with regard to staff handbook and computerized program for collecting the fees. And the idea in the, these charts often do come out all right. Down there at the bottom right-hand corner, the goal is to have the, the ordinance come forward and approval from the state of the CIE so that at the same meeting, you can adopt the CIE and at least have the first reading, and we may be able to be having the second reading, on the ordinance at that time, at which point you'll be completely ready to go into the impact fee business, if you so desire. It's, it's strictly up to, up to you. The, another way of looking at it is this little diagram, I think you've seen this before, but I think, I don't think I can point with this, can I?
No.
No, can't point, so I have to wave my hands. And the, the box on the upper right, upper left-hand side of this little diagram is the methodology report. And very simplistically, within that methodology report, there are forecasts of future growth and development in the city, there are specific projects, proposed capital improvement projects to meet the demand of the future growth, parks projects, road projects, that sort of thing. And we calculate the maximum impact fees that you could charge under, under that approach. We do the maximum because the state says you can't charge too much. You can't charge more than new developments' fair shares. So the question is, well, what is their fair share? That establishes a ceiling. You can charge less, but you can't charge more. So that's why the maximum is in there, but it's not a proposed fee. It's just the maximum that you could charge if you so desired. It's just the maximum that you could charge if you so desired. The top two parts, the forecasts and the projects, move with the arrows to the right. The right, upper right-hand box is the capital improvements element. That's where we quantify the needs and how we're going to meet those needs. That's drawn right out of the methodology report. That's what goes to Atlanta Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs for review. The bottom box in the methodology box on the, on the left were those maximum impact fees. That feeds into the impact fee ordinance. Not only will we be working on an ordinance and proposing that to you and working with the city attorney on that, we will also be working with you on, on what impact fees, if any, you actually want to charge. So we go from the maximum in the methodology report, but then we step down to a fee schedule within the ordinance. Meanwhile, sort of back at the ranch, Tonto, not knowing that the Lone Ranger was disguised as, we get the response back from the state and the region, and then hopefully things all come together. You can adopt both documents, the ordinance and the CIE, at that meeting. Upcoming events, of course, the first event is right now, the public hearing we're having. Yes, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. It was somebody from the back. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. The Planning Commission is going to have a presentation on that methodology report, June the twenty-fourth, at their meeting. That will then come to you, along with any comments the Planning Commission has, in a work session on July the thirteenth. If you're ready, we'll be ready for you to transmit that to ARC and the state at your July twenty meeting. And depending on how things are going at that point, we will be proposing a schedule to have the, uh, moving forward with the actual transmit... I, I jumped ahead of myself here. You'll be looking at the methodology report July twentieth. Then we will decide when you want to consider sending the CIE to the state. We don't have a date for that yet. The transmittal public hearing is, is to be decided as well as when, if at all, you, you may be interested in adopting an impact fee program. And lastly, but not leastly, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you. Any public comments that you may, that anyone may wish to express with regard to things like the planning process, impact fees in general, questions and answers, anything anybody wants to say?
We do not have any public comments.
All right, since we don't have any public comment, I, actually, I believe we did. So we, uh, we will have public comment. And I think, how many public comments cards do we have? Is this?
Just for this one.
It's just one, Sudi?
Just one.
Okay. I'll, I'll open up for the public comment in either support or, or not at this item.
Mr. Walter Rieckel.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. My name's Walter Rieckel. I live at six fifteen Scarlet Oak Trail. I'm not going to say I'm against or really for the impact fee, but what I'd rather do is have a little bit more of a true kickoff meeting where the community can interact with the, with the consultant to really talk about and to understand all these elements. I think having it at this meeting, and as you can see, not many people are standing up and talking, perhaps are not very informed on what's occurring. Number two, when you do create an impact fee, as the consultant said, you've got to develop what plans you need to improve, what roads, what bridges, what different things have to be improved. I think we're kind of jumping the gun a little bit. I know we've got plans for doing a transportation study that would much clearer define what needs to be done. And in some ways, if it's even a parks improvement or, or whatever, we need to have a clear vision of what we're spending money on. And until we really do that, I think, again, we're just really getting very quick input from staff and not getting a lot of input from the public in what's considered high priority or any priority to the process. That's a very critical element in this methodology, and I think the consultant will agree with that as well. So to not have those elements really in a document that's been really well-vented to the community is kind of a disservice. I, I, I think, you know, if you do the impact fee, having that information is going to be very important. Having traffic studies, having an understanding of where you're having growth and potential, and not just within our own community, but what impacts are occurring, both on a regional area, be it for Cherokee County, for, um, for Forsyth County, Alpharetta, and what people are coming in towards our businesses. So I, I think, again, having a very clear understanding of what we're trying to collect fees for is going to make a big difference in how much money you're going to potentially raise. And the lastly, on impact fees in general, I will just say, from my experience working with the city of Roswell, as being their city engineer at Public Works, you know, we did collect impact fees. The problem is, it takes a long time to collect money to where there's a significant amount to actually do a lot of things with it. You're almost quicker doing things with a bond referendum, having a clear idea, collecting the amount of money that you need, define that bond, and go ahead and get the money, and go ahead about getting the project completed. I'm not saying impact fees is not a tool to help build that money, but again, I think it's a very, a very slow building tool that really takes a lot of time to really get monies accumulated, to get something taken care of. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Appreciate what you do for us.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Is there any other public comment?
That's all, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and open up the, for Mr. Ross or any of other staff to counsel if you have any questions. Any questions or comments? Okay.
Based, based on Mr. Rieckel's comments, I assume there will be plenty of time along this process for the public to give us their input on the projects that we feel like need to be done that would, um, help us, impact fees could help us accomplish. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. This, the purpose of this meeting tonight is just let people know you're even thinking about them.
Right.
The next big step will be to produce this methodology report. It's in draft form right now. We've been working on it with staff. That will become a public document available to the public prior to the briefing with Planning Commission, and that was going to be June twenty-fourth. So that's when we'll, the methodology report has the list of all the projects that are being considered. They're drawn from your master, uh, master plan for recreation and parks, uh, improvements, road improvements you already have scheduled. There's nothing in there new and different you never saw before. We've mostly brought together projects that you've already got planned, scheduled, or in the works in, in one way or another. The, uh, and I do want to mention something about bonds. And Walter's absolutely correct. You don't collect the last impact fee until the last house is built or the last business is built. Meanwhile, you need the money sooner than that. So as we talk about the methodology report and, and fees and whatnot, we'll also be talking about how are you really going to pay for all this stuff? Sometimes pay-as-you-go is okay. Other times, you've got to, you've got to move ahead and you need alternate funding, whether it's bonds, short-term notes, whatever it may be. We'll be talking to you about financing options also. You can't just sit around and wait for the money to come rolling in from impact fees.
Okay, Bill? No, I'm sorry. Bill, no care.
Mr. Ross, I believe there are what a discreet number of areas that we can use impact fees in. Roads, parks, I don't recall the other specific areas.
Fire and police.
Fire and police. I think it was several months ago when we brought up this issue about investigating impact fees. I believe at that time, we specified which areas that we were going to use these impact fees. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that was in the, that assessment report we talked about. We sort of went through all of the various categories and indicated which you had information for and projects for, which ones made sense for impact fees and which ones, like water and sewer, you're not in the water and sewer business, so things like that didn't apply. Yes.
Okay. So you know where we're going to start out then with our kickoff meeting. You're going to identify those specific areas that we're going, we're anticipating where we're going to use these fees or proposing anyways.
Yes. And importantly, we're not just making this stuff up. We're, we're taking all this from projects you've already got scheduled or are already adopted in plans or are your, in your capital improvement, uh, plan for the city. There's nothing in there we just thought, well, here's a good idea, let's throw this in, too. There may be some things that we need to add when we get back to you with the list of projects. But it's, it's, you will recognize virtually every project in that report that you've, you've already seen at one time or another in some format.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
And it is the type of thing that if by some chance we got grant money to pay for one of the projects, there's some flexibility even once we get a list finalized of projects, correct?
Yes.
We have a, if the transport, new transportation thing comes in and says that, you know, there's another project we weren't aware of, which I can't imagine that needs to be done immediately, there's a lot of flexibility once we know what projects are out there.
Yeah. There's, and there are two, there are two things, sort of a minor change and a major change. And if, if we're shifting one project to another, that may be okay, or maybe we cut one in half or expand another one that's already on the list. Every four or five years, you actually need to go back, you should go back, and redo the big study all over again because inflation will have changed prices. Everything's fixed. Everything is fixed in price. Now, it's present value price, but, um, those may no longer be valid five years from now. So, and there may be project, bigger projects that come along. I see Johns Creek is going to go build themselves a big new city center. Maybe you're going to build yourself a new city center. I don't know. But as things do change, you need to kind of take a look, how are things going? You will, if you get into the impact fee business, you will need to file an annual report with the state. It's a pretty simple report. They call it a CIE update, but basically you tell the state, what'd you collect? What'd you do with it? What's in the bank? Where's it going? As well as what's the status of all of the projects that were in there? And there's some flexibility there for, for moving things around also.
Okay, Matt?
What's been your experience with regards to public enthusiasm or interest in impact fees? I mean, obviously, if tonight's our kickoff meeting, and according to Mr. Rieckel's comments, you know, if we're doing this, you know, obviously, we, I'm sure our staff did advertising as much as we always do, but is it usually a low turnout on something like this?
Nobody wants to pay anything. You can start with that idea. Whether or not they're willing to or not, who knows? Our experience in other communities has been that impact fees have been accepted because it keeps the tax rate down. You're not having to tax everybody, including new development, to build stuff that, the only people who needed it was new development. Something else we'll talk about when we get to ordinance time, you have the ability to adopt certain exemptions. The state doesn't say what you can exempt, but the state does say it either has to be for economic, extraordinary economic development or affordable housing. And we'll talk again about are there categories or there circumstances under which some exemptions might, might make sense to put in the, put in the ordinance. I've always been reminded, and Walter probably remembers this, soon after Roswell adopted impact fees, the big, the big Home Depot, oh, I can't remember the highway now, but the big Home Depot was a quarter mile from Cherokee County, which at that time didn't have impact fees. They paid a million dollars in impact fees for that location because that's where they wanted to be. Move, move a quarter mile down the road, they could have been in Cherokee County. So it, it ends up a lot of individual kinds of, of discussions and, and implications about how, how these go forward. But communities all over the state, mostly in the Atlanta metro area, have impact fees, have had them for quite a while. They're fluid. Cherokee County has had impact fees since, I don't remember when, some back, somewhere back in the early two thousands. When the recession came in, they reduced their impact fee schedule down to only ten percent of that maximum they could charge. They have now gone back. The recession's over, and then I think the Cherokee County Commission has sort of said, okay, guys, we helped you out. Now it's time to get back to business as usual. But they also have exemptions that they can apply on, on extraordinary economic development situations.
Okay. Anybody else? Bill?
To Matt's point here, I think it needs to be discussed a little bit more. This is probably one of the most exciting subjects I've heard in a long time. I'm being facetious. How do you generate interest in, in this public vetting process then? When those who are really impacted are, are the developers for the most part?
Now, bear in mind...
Excuse me, can I jump in? And I, I'm hearing that and some discussion. And, you know, if you look at our, our scheduled meetings, I would consider this as just a, as Mr. Ross said, this is a formality. This is almost like a first presentation where it's being put on the record that we're going to be... I wouldn't necessarily expect, if your question is about getting the public out right now, I wouldn't expect the public to have much input or questions yet until we start rolling this out and have some, some discussions. And we certainly, obviously, we can promote it to, obviously, we'll get the word out there so that, you know, we'll have plenty of participation for those that are impacted or care. So not trying to jump in, but if that's...
That's a better answer than I had.
Okay.
More specifically to the point is, how, how do you generate interest?
I don't know that we can generate interest. What we can do is generate information out to the public for those who are interested enough to check on the website and whatnot. If you really want interest, you go out and you put rezoning signs all over the place. That, that'll bring them in. And remember, too, that you appointed an advisory, a citizens advisory committee that includes a number of, of representatives from the development community. At least fifty percent of them had to be either developers or builders or people, bankers, et cetera. And we have met with that group twice. And of course, we expect the members of the advisory committee to report back or talk to their friends or generate some interest on their own without, without our interference, if you, if you will.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross.
Commissioner.
Appreciate that. I'm pretty sure I close the public hearing, so any other questions of any other staff? Not, then, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution authorizing its attorney to exercise the city of Milton, Georgia's powers of eminent domain in the acquisition of certain interests in property, parcel number twelve, situated in the city of Milton, Georgia, and in Fulton County, Georgia, for public road and/or other public transportation purposes. This is agenda item number fifteen, one, two, six. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Actually, the next four items all represent the same property owner, and through this process, they have asked that we lump these four particular pieces of property in together through the discussions. In light of that, I'd like to do the same with this discussion. And while Sudi needs to read each of these items individually into the record, I'd just like to give my presentation on the first item, and any questions related to these four items, I think I can answer at that time, so.
Dave, if you could bring up that one exhibit and rotate it to the right, block watch.
Just to give you a little bit better idea of the properties that we're dealing with, these are properties owned by John Wheelan Homes. The exhibits in your package were the legal exhibits necessary for the condemnation practice and was, and probably a little bit difficult to read. So I've highlighted here the properties that we're talking about tonight. It represents four individual pieces of property, parcels twelve, twenty-four, twenty-two, and twenty-two A. Combined, these represent a little over a half acre in right-of-way acquisition and a little over a half acre of easement acquisition. Since two thousand and twelve, we've been working with the property owner to develop the... Since 2012, we've been working with the property owner to develop the location of the right-of-way and the roadway so that we would impact the properties and development plans as little as we could throughout the design process. And we feel like we've put the road exactly where they asked us to do that. On January 26th of this year, we transmitted our final offer over to John Wheelan Homes regarding the overall property. And at this point, we have offered and been able to extend a combined $545,180. The counter offer that we received back on this was $1,582,578. This property has, or all of these properties have gone to an appeals agent, and the appeals agent heard the discussion last week. The result of that was that he upheld our offer of $545,180, and they have up until this Friday to respond back to that. So what you're hearing tonight, the condemnation requests, we will continue to negotiate in good faith with the property owner up until the point that they respond back to the appeals officer. At that point, if they choose not to accept that offer, we will continue on with the filing of the condemnation to get this project back on track and under schedule for a letting later this year. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, I'll open up for any questions for Carter on that. Good question, Joe?
Yeah, so Carter, refresh my memory, when we take actions such as this, let's just say we take the final step and claim the property, we end up paying what we offered as part of that, or we then, is there some other step in trying to figure out exactly what the costs are going to be associated with this?
Well, the initial condemnation would be based on our initial offer. So the initial offer on the property was $454,300. We can always negotiate through this entire process. So, but our initial offer goes back, or our initial condemnation goes back to the original appraised values of the property.
Okay, so their incentive to respond in the positive, I won't say favorably, I'll say in the positive to our request is so that they can get the higher offers?
That's right. And I guess Ken could weigh in. At some point during the appeals process or during the condemnation process, it could be determined that our values are too low, and we could end up paying their offer or somewhere in between.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay.
I guess technically, we would, would have to hear each of these items separate and-
Yep.
But discussion, discussion would be in general.
That's right.
That's what I said.
Okay. All right. Now, there's no more questions, I'll open up for a motion on this item.
May I move then, we approve a resolution authorizing its attorney to exercise the city of Milton, Georgia's powers of eminent domain in the acquisition of certain interests in property, parcel number 12, situated in the city of Milton, Georgia, and in Fulton County, Georgia, for public road and/or other public transportation purposes, agenda item number 15-126.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Sudi, if you'll call the next item for the record.
Next item, consideration of a resolution authorizing its attorney to exercise the city of Milton, Georgia's powers of eminent domain in the acquisition of certain interests in property, parcel number 22, situated in the city of Milton, Georgia, and in Fulton County, Georgia, for public road and/or other public transportation purposes, agenda item number 15-127.
Okay, does anybody have any specific questions for Carter on this one, Joe?
Yeah, I want a follow-up question. Perhaps people who aren't familiar with this process, I mean, we don't pluck these numbers out of the air, we don't arbitrarily set these values. These values are calculated, we use a lot of historical data, we use comparable data to come up with these values. And the appeals process is normally based on similar, if not identical, information that we use to come up with the original offer, is that correct?
That's correct. Once we get to this stage of the condemnation, all of these properties are, have gone through a professional appraisal to determine these values. And G.D.A. approved them.
You've been doing this a while. I haven't been doing it very long, but this is the largest gap I've ever seen between what we were thinking is a fair offer and what the other side was thinking is a fair offer.
Percentage-wise, we've had a few greater than this.
Ah, okay, percentage-wise, yeah. Okay.
All right, that's all. Okay, anybody else? Karen?
Just for clarification, I mean, we do this because this is the taxpayers' money we're spending on the property. So we want to be very careful that we're not overpaying for, that our taxpayers are not overpaying for the parcels that we are having to purchase in order to do this, correct?
That's correct. And we don't enter into this process lightly at any point. I mean, we will continue to negotiate in good, good faith through this entire process and see if we can come to a resolution. We believe we've done the best we can in appraising the property and working the project to suit their development needs, and we just have not been able to come to an adequate resolution at this point.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, you know, obviously, we have to, as a, as a council of staff, have to make sure that, you know, our public funds are, are spent wisely, so we certainly can't overpay for something, but we certainly have gone through everything to make sure that we are not underpaying, you know, property owners for the value of their property. So just because we can't get returns is not because we're necessarily offering them less than it's valued, it's just there's a, you know, there's a difference of thought on the, on the value, and that I believe we all, I'm confident we all believe that we have, have done our due diligence to try to get the best, fairest value for that property owner.
Correct.
What was again the aggregate roughly area in all of them?
It's .51 acres of right-of-way acquisition, fee simple right-of-way, and .55 acres of permanent easement.
A little over an acre.
And what's our land that the city hall is sitting on?
A little under two and a half acres.
Okay. Now, no more discussion, I'll open for a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing our attorney to exercise the city of Milton, Georgia's powers of eminent domain in the acquisition of certain interests in property, parcel number 22, situated in the city of Milton, Georgia, and in Fulton County, Georgia, for public road and/or other public transportation purposes, agenda item 15-127.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Thurman, second from Councilmember Kuntz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution authorizing its attorney to exercise the city of Milton, Georgia's powers of eminent domain in the acquisition of certain interests in property, parcel number 22A, situated in the city of Milton, Georgia, and in Fulton County, Georgia, for public road and/or other public transportation purposes, agenda item number 15-128.
Okay. We'll go back, is there any additional questions or comments? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 15-128.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion for Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution authorizing its attorney to exercise the city of Milton, Georgia's powers of eminent domain in the acquisition of certain interests in property, parcel number 24, situated in the city of Milton, Georgia, and in Fulton County, Georgia, for public road and/or other public transportation purposes, agenda item number 15-129.
Okay. May I make a motion? Open that to a motion?
To approve agenda item number 15-129.
Second. Okay, a motion by Councilmember Kuntz, second by Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Sudi, if you'll call the next item, please.
Our final item is consideration to accept an application for the abandonment of a portion of public right-of-way on Hickory Pass within the Hickory Crest subdivision. This is agenda item number 15-130. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening. Again, Mayor and Council, this is an application that we received for the abandonment of a small portion at the end of Hickory Flat, or Hickory Pass, in the package, we don't have one out here, sorry.
Do you have a picture of it?
We've got it in the package.
All right, good, good.
Now, this is the first step in our abandonment process. What we do when these come in is we bring it before council to give you an opportunity just to say yes or no, if there are any strong feelings one way or the other, before we get into the depth of the review of any abandonment request. At this point, we don't have a staff recommendation, and are not making a staff recommendation until we get into this review process. But this is a small piece of right-of-way at the end of Hickory Pass, which would potentially connect to a future phase of this particular development. The applicant has requested that the right-of-way to be considered for abandonment eliminate that potential connection, and staff will review it if it moves forward tonight with that in mind. Again, the applicant will have to determine that no substantial public purpose is served by the, by the right-of-way, or that its removal from the municipal street, municipal street system is in the best interest of the community in order for the abandonment to finally be approved. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Carter, because we kind of had this issue on another, another time last year. Obviously, this, this right-of-way was, you know, if there was a future phase, obviously there's property there, it may not be the same developer. What would happen in that case if another developer were to purchase that property and develop something on, on that property? Is there public benefit to connection there, or, you know, just having a total different connect? Is there any, you know, does the property, the property owner have any, any rights to that at all, or if it's not the same developer, would that kind of just go away?
Right, the property owner to the west doesn't necessarily have any particular rights other than it's public right-of-way. One of the things that we'll look at in the review process is how the abandonment of that connection would affect the overall system up there. Would that adjacent property still have adequate access onto Hickory Flat Road? So there's a number of things that we'll look at when we're evaluating that and bring forth with our staff recommendation. It's not something that we have looked at to date.
Carter, how does this work with the fire department's accessibility for those two lots down Hickory Pass?
Well, that's one thing that will go into our overall evaluation. Just looking at this briefly, there was a temporary cul-de-sac that was to be provided at the end of Hickory Pass. One of the considerations, if this were to move forward and the abandonment was recommended for approval, is the potential of constructing that cul-de-sac at the end of Hickory Pass to facilitate emergency access.
Yeah.
Are all of these, I assume all the lots are developed?
They are developed. I don't know that all of those on that back have actual homes on them.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, and again, to your point, Carter, this is basically, if we approve this, that you guys will look into it, it's not a, we're not making a final decision on it, but-
That's right.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, comments, I'll open up for a motion.
May I make a motion that we accept an application for the abandonment of a portion of public right-of-way on Hickory Pass within the Hickory Crest subdivision, agenda item number 15-130.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Kuntz, second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, we'll move on to reports. I want to just take a minute and thank everybody that was involved, from staff to citizens to vendors to council for the jubilee this weekend, it was Saturday. It turned out really good, I think. It was kind of neat, it had a good feel to it. You just saw, you know, members of the community and a lot of, a lot of families and citizens out there, but also with the vendors and just the street shut off there, I could just see, you know, many more events. People seemed to like it, they really liked the pavilion, I'm really glad we did that, that's turned out good, and just had a great feel, so thanks to everybody that was involved with that. Is there anything council wants to report on? Okay, all right, I'm going to, yeah, good enough, you have anything? All right. I'll move on to our staff.
Mayor, I've just got one quick report tonight before we get into the different department reports for you, and that's to just let you know that we did not, in fact, close on Providence Park last week. Fulton County has got some comments, it's to do quickly indeed, that we've submitted to them. So I don't believe that we're, we're still moving towards the finish line, I just didn't, I reported to you at the last council meeting that I was going to end up closing on it last week, and that did not occur. I'm hopeful that maybe we'll get to it this week. So I will let you know when it, when it happens. Also, a quick reminder, and I think probably saw an email from the mayor, that the National Day of Prayer this week event at the Broadwell Pavilion Thursday, independent group of churches are coming together to use that facility for that day, that's Thursday at noon, if anybody plans to attend. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, so I don't want you to think I'm turning the mic off and I'm going to sit back and, and listen here, but if you don't mind, we'll get through the published department reports that we have tonight, and then I'll take any questions that you might have at the end, and anything that you would like an update on, does that work?
Yep.
All right, so we will start with the police department and Chief Crookoff.
Chief, I'll put you on the spot for a second, but just any general comments on your, your employment here so far, how, how it's going, and what you, what you're finding?
It's been, it's been fantastic, and I hope that my old friends in Albany are watching streaming right now. It is, it's a great place to be, I got to say, just starting with, with the men and women within the department, but just expanding from out there, the people in this community and, and all the people that I have had the pleasure to work with, both within the city and the council. I mean, I couldn't have asked for anything more. This is, people often ask me, how are you acclimating? It's very easy to acclimate in this direction, I couldn't imagine acclimating in the opposite direction and going back up north. This is, I, I, this, this has been a great experience, I'm looking forward to having my fam, my family come join me down here.
Good deal.
And I'd like, Mayor and Council, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to briefly present before you this evening. I know you have a set of stats that have been provided to you, just so that I could bring that a little bit into a year-over-year context for you. What you have, obviously, is the first quarter of stats, month by month, January through February, but where that really starts shedding light is, is when you extrapolate that out to the end of the year and start figuring out, where are we in relation to where we were in 2014 and 2013? Currently, crime-wise, which is at the top of your stats, we are forecasted out to be almost exactly in line with where we were for 2014, that I don't necessarily see as a positive. We're going to be looking at setting internal goals in the organization, and then creating strategies to reach those goals for reductions in that, and then continue that year-over-year. Just below that, you'll see the accident data, the, our accidents, if extrapolated out for the year, brings us almost to around 640 in, in property damage and 132 in personal injury. Those are numbers that we need to look at, see how we can reduce those. We have to look at this in a strategic manner as far as enforcement, education, and, and engineering, to be able to reduce those numbers, and we'll be setting year-over-year goals to, to reduce those as well. As time goes on, I'd like to look to see the numbers that I'm presenting to you, maybe add some information that, that you see fit. We do need to look at, from a community-centric point, what it is, what is it we're trying to achieve, because the only way you're going to achieve those measures is truly by looking at them on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month basis, and also reward that kind of behavior within the organization, so the officers know truly that is what we are trying to achieve. Just to put that in- Just to put that in the plainest terms, if every, if all you do are measure tickets, that's what you're going to get. And when we're looking at things like that, we want to make sure that we are achieving an end, we are reducing accidents, we are improving traffic safety, we are improving pedestrian ability to move about, bicycling, things along those lines. And those are the things that we'll be working on for the next several months, as we create a, a strategic plan for the department. Additionally, some things that you just might see that might jump out at you, you'll see a significant jump in stats from March to February in the code enforcement area. That wasn't a tremendous increase in code enforcement, that was a move over to a new data collection system that was created, and so it's, we didn't actually go from two to 71 cases opened, but it's, we're collecting them in a, in a, in a better format. In additionally, one thing I would, I'm planning on moving forward with, I am creating, well, I'm taking a survey and, and forming it around the needs of Milton from the Department of Justice, to be able to put out to our community as a survey, so they can weigh in on what they see as important to their city. They'll be able to look at not only service delivery on behalf of, on the part of the police department, but also they'll be able to prior, prioritize what they see as our pressing needs in their communities. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to bring all of that information back, it's going to help me look at different stakeholders and determine, you know, truly, what is it the community needs, and what are their expectations for their police department? So we can, we can firmly wrap our, our hands around that as a police department, but also we can actually deliver on the needs and expectations of our community members. With that being said, I'm hoping that if, if your schedules permit, in the next, within the next, maybe month or so, if you have the opportunity, I'd love to be able to have that time to sit down with you, in whatever time you may have, to be able to, to have a little bit of that one-on-one, and get a firm understanding of what it is you see as, as a vision for the police department, and what you're looking for from us. So if you have that ability, I'd love to, to have that time as well. That being said, does, do Mayor and Council, do you have any questions?
Joe?
Yeah, there were a couple of numbers, other than that code enforcement cases, that popped out at me, so I was just going to ask you real quick, because one of them I thought was pretty good, the average response time went down dramatically. Was there a, a good explanation for that? I mean, obviously, that's good, that's something that we should aspire to, but it seemed a little bit weird.
It does seem like a big drop. I questioned it on the surface, but what I truly want to see is how are we truly calculating response times? There, you can, you can calculate response time from the time the person makes the phone call into dispatch, to the time that the officer arrives at the house, you can calculate from the time it's dispatched to the officer, to the time they get there. If an officer cancels a call because they go to another prioritized call, how are we timing that? That may not be a true indicator of how quickly we are responding to our, our citizens' needs. So that, that does represent a drop, but I don't know that it necessarily represents the drop we're hoping it does.
Right. Did we have some kind of a change in our methodology, or anything else that would account for that? Because I would think it'd at least be consistent from month to month.
You would think so. I don't have enough information on that. I know we pulled this directly from dispatch through Alpharetta, so you're correct in making that assumption. There is something changed in that time. I don't know if it was road conditions or anything along those lines, but anything I'd be saying right now would be purely a conjecture.
We had a good uptick in traffic stops as well, and the citations, traffic citations, looks like at the end of the quarter, we're really trying to hand out tickets. I don't know, it, it seems a little bit confusing to me why it would be that drastic of an increase between February and March, but maybe that's just the way it is.
Let me ask, let me ask a question to that. Does that have anything to do seasonal, possibly, with the winter, you know, January, February, people inside, March, and I'm just saying, you know, historically, and you may not know the answer to that, but I'm just wondering if that, you know, all of a sudden people are out and about driving, I don't know if that has any impact or not.
Well, I started March 29th, and I could tell you 780 tickets weren't written in two days. But I, I could assure you, when they're, when they're looking at this, this is, I'm an outcomes person, and as leader of this organization, I'm going, we're going to be an outcomes-driven organization. The number of tickets to me are immaterial. I know they may not be immaterial to, when you're looking at revenues, but from a public safety standpoint, the number of tickets that are written, if they're not changing behavior, then you haven't, you're not achieving what you're trying to do. So when you get towards the, the end of a month or a quarter, or things like that, you know, I've heard that for 25 years in policing, that, oh, the tickets go up at the end of a, whatever, whatever timeframe. If that has been the case here, it won't be going forward. I don't suspect that was the situation, though, come the end of March.
Yeah, and I was not trying to make lie to that fact, and I was giggling a little bit, only because, you know, you're right, you came here on the 29th, so, you know, it's certainly not something that happened, you know, just to welcome you here or anything like that.
No, they've been very welcoming, but cer, certainly not in tickets.
Okay. Mayor?
Chief, if you were, if all these items here were, if you could rank which one would be the most important to you, that you want to see the most impact on with your arrival here, which one would you want to see fixed the quickest? I'm just curious about which matters most to you.
Well, I'm anxious to hear what the community has to say, because I think there's a lot of things here that aren't captured in, in what we, what we have here, and some of those things that I've, I've been hearing as I'm talking to people in the community regarding potential issues associated with substance abuse and, and mental health issues, things along those lines, which don't necessarily get captured in, in, in these numbers. If those do pan out, and right now, I'm not finding the data to support a lot of those things that I'm looking for, though I'm not saying that I necessarily have the full data set to be able to analyze that. What you are, from what you are looking at here, fortunately, again, coming from a much different city, it looks like we actually have some time to spend on reducing things like traffic accidents and improving traffic flow throughout the city from, again, from, not only from an enforcement standpoint, but we could educate our public too, and you have fantastic traffic engineers, I wish I had them where I came from here. It is, there's a lot of things that we can do to change that. That's not saying crime is not important. One, one crime where someone is, is physically injured, obviously outweighs all kinds of other issues. But that is the one, that I'm seeing just from this data that we see in front of us right now, we seem to have a, we seem to have some work to do where it comes to accidents. Looking forward to drilling down and seeing if there's, if there's more patterns behind these numbers.
Okay. Bill?
Chief, I'm welcoming aboard here, too. On the same topic of traffic accidents, and talking about the unfortunate incident up on Freemanville Road this weekend, this area apparently is the lambs of bicycle racing and, and training out here, and I know we can't prevent it, cyclists have just as much ride on the road as, as others, but we've brought it up in the past, is the fact that they, the cyclists, and particularly in large groups, create an obstacle on the road, and I think generate road rage, or lack of tolerance from, from drivers, and I think that's probably part of the issue that happened this weekend. And I know you haven't probably gotten into this whole issue in depth, but I think I'd like to look at some research or study on what we can do to make cyclists more safe on these roads, and make motorists more aware of, of the fact that there are large groups of cyclists.
I think, well, the Georgia, Georgia law is pretty clear on, on what cyclists can and cannot do, but I think education's going to go a long way on, on both sides of that. It's, we have to share these roads, and we have to find a way to do it, and make sure we do, we share, we use our shared spaces in the most safe manner possible, I think. I think education's going to go a long way in this one.
I'll add one thing to that, too, Bill. One of the components of our CTP this year, it was the last time we approved the CTP, but one of the things we'll be focusing on is bicycle safety, and those things that we can do, do to improve the transportation network to support that.
And to, you know, and just to piggyback on a comment there, I would like to take this opportunity to say that certainly our thoughts and prayers are out with Mr., I believe Jason Young was, was the man that lost his life, or with him, as well as everybody else involved, it's a sad situation, and maybe we as a city can educate and make some improvements and educate, again, our, both drivers and cyclists, to be safe, and maybe in his, out of this tragedy, maybe we can have some benefits that can come. Again, just a sad situation, so our thoughts and prayers would go out to his family. Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next.
That was going to be Carter. Before we leave that topic, I just, I want to, just because I believe our police department has made or is even investigating additional charges in that accident, I just want to be real careful to, to not indicate at all that we have, are suggesting what the cause of, of the accident was, or whose fault it might have been, that'll all happen out of the police department, so I just want to be sure that we don't jeopardize a criminal case in, in making those conclusions. Having said that, let's move...
And I don't think, to my comments, I don't think I was...
No, 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 I didn't, but I, the comments that we just heard are specific to bicyclists in Milton, I just want to emphasize that, that it's not this particular accident, but bicyclists in general.
Carter?
Thank you. The, the monthly numbers that you have in front of you, if you have any specific questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'd like to do is just kind of spend my time going through a project list, just to give you a quick update on where we are with a number of different projects that we have going in the Public Works Department. So one of the big projects that we're finishing up right now is the Birmingham Highway Providence, New Providence Roundabout. We're looking over the next two to three weeks for the contractor to be wrapping that up, cleaning up, seeding and grassing those. We have a little additional drainage work that we'll be doing down New Providence Road. We're currently waiting on a contract back from the contractor to get that initiated.
Do we know when that might be?
We thought we're going to be bringing it forward tonight. My guess is that they'll have their bonds and all their paperwork together, and we'll be bringing it forward on the 18th, which will allow them to get kicked off. In fact, you'll probably see a contract come through on our administrative review, so we can go ahead and get those kicked off, and then the contract will come forward for ratification on the consent agenda for the 18th agenda. That would be our expectation at this point. And then we'll be wrapping that particular project up. The next project that we're working on, and we had some discussion on it tonight, is the State Route 372 Crab Apple Project, which is our northwest connector road, the new road through the Crab Apple area. We're currently, we've got two property owners that we're finishing up our right-of-way negotiations on, we hope to have resolution on those this week, so we can move forward. Our next step with that is that we've got to clear the right-of-way. We've got one home that's in the right-of-way that we had the relocation on, the old Korean Church property, we'll have to have that demolished before we can certify the right-of-way, and turn that over to GDOT to get in, hopefully to their September construction letting. That'll move us into construction late 2015, and hopefully 18 months to two years later, we'll be driving on a new road in Crab Apple. The next project we've got is the roundabout at Hopewell Road and Birmingham Road. We approved that contract tonight, so we'll issue that notice to proceed to the contractor, and he'll be working with the utility companies to start getting some of the utilities relocated. Hope to have those by the end of June, and we can begin in earnest on the rest of the roundabout construction after that. Construction time's estimated to be nine to 12 months on that. Hopefully, we'll have better weather moving forward than we have in the past here. Webb Road at Deerfield Parkway, another intersection project that we've got going. We've had an inordinate amount of accidents at that particular location, so we're going to be looking at doing some left-turn improvements on Webb Road to try and clear that up. We've got surveys in process right now, hope to have those surveys in, in the next couple of days, so we can begin looking at the layout of that particular design and move forward with that, hope to have that in by the end of this year. One of the things that we're going to be doing on that, too, in conjunction with the Big Creek Greenway Project, we're going to be looking at a couple of intersection demonstration projects at that particular location to improve pedestrian mobility around the intersections. So if those go well and evaluate well, we'll be looking to do some of those different types of improvements at some of our other intersections along that corridor. Mayfield Road streetscape improvements, that's the sidewalks from the main intersection in Crab Apple down to Charlotte and the library. Just finishing up environmental review on that with GDOT, and once we've got that done and right-of-way plans approved, we can begin right-of-way acquisition on that. We've tried to be very careful in our right-of-way there to keep everything within the existing right-of-way, so that all we've got to do is basically obtain driveway easements, so hopefully that will go quickly and smoothly, and we can get that project moving.
Quick question, and it's not, this is Alpharetta versus us, do we have any update at all on when they're going to complete the sidewalk that's coming from Ruth's Farm, right by the Freemanville intersection? They moved the lamppost and the traffic light back?
Yeah, I know the location, I don't, but I can get that for you.
Okay, appreciate that.
They've been edge of pavement patching all through there this morning.
Really?
That road is just falling apart.
I'll touch base with Alpharetta.
Thanks. I think Bill, I think Bill has a question.
Yes, sir.
Carter, you mentioned the survey at Webb and Deerfield Parkway.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an updated survey of all of the major intersections as far as accident occurrences? And if we do, what's, what's the next priority of improving those intersections?
I do, I don't know that off the top of my head. That will certainly be one of the things that we go through with our CTP update, that's one of the prime things that we do look at. This one happened to jump out at us because of the number of accidents, I think we've had 26 over a three-year period, basically 10 a year, and so we, we felt like it was kind of a low-hanging fruit that we could do relatively easily to improve that particular intersection.
What's the threshold? Is there any particular threshold as far as number of accidents per unit of time?
There's not, I think it's really kind of relative to each individual community. So a high accident rate for us may not be a high accident rate in Roswell, but it's something that we want to address as a community, so I don't know that there's a particular number that we look for, we just look at it relative to other intersections within our jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Back to Rick's project on the sidewalk, where does that, where would this, the proposed Alpharetta sidewalk in on the, I guess, west, western, towards the library? Does it go to Charlotte?
No, it stops right at Freemanville. So just past Freemanville, you enter the city of Milton.
Okay.
And so from just west of the intersection, all the way in, all the way to Charlotte would be Milton right-of-way.
And are we considering that gap?
We have, we've actually had a lot of requests from Alpharetta to kind of close that gap between, names drawing a blank, of the road right across the street from the park property that we're looking at, the neighborhood.
Bascom Farms.
Bascom Farms, back up to Freemanville. And so we're really looking for opportunities to kind of partner with Alpharetta, where they need sidewalk within Milton, but we need sidewalk within Alpharetta to make those connections. But I don't know that we've come to a resolution on that, but it's some discussions that we're having with Alpharetta Public Works, so we can try and make some of those connections happen.
Hopefully, they'll actually extend right to the end of that subdivision, Ruth Chris, excuse me, Ruth's Farm, it's Ruth Chris. Okay. If we could have Ruth's Farm to the property line, which I think extends actually a little bit past Freemanville, if you look at where the things, it'd be nice that they actually end the sidewalk there, kind of right where, where Milton starts.
And a lot of those projects, obviously, have to do with right-of-way acquisition, and the willingness of the adjacent property owners to deal with the city and the construction of sidewalks, so all of those are concerns we look at when we're evaluating these sidewalk pieces. The next two are the intersections at Freemanville-Providence and Freemanville, Freemanville-Birmingham. If you remember, these were two projects that we looked at together. We're finishing up the conceptual plans that we will bring back to the City Council for final recommendations. Under the current capital improvement program, it's programmed as Freemanville-Birmingham would be budgeted in 2017, and Freemanville-Providence would be budgeted in 2018, but we'll look at those recommendations with the final concept of... But we'll look at those recommendations with the final concept approval, as well as in conjunction with other intersection improvements that are being done in the area. As we've seen with the Hopewell Francis Cogburn intersection, as you build out these intersection improvements, they become far more efficient, and any deficient intersections that you have in the general vicinity get hit even harder. And so with the construction of the roundabout at 372 Providence, New Providence, we'll be looking real hard at how Freemanville and Providence operates as the four-way stop.
I can attest to the fact that it has definitely, that's where the backup is now.
Yeah.
Once you get past that intersection, it's great getting through the roundabout now, but yeah, it backs up way past Summit Hill Elementary School when you're heading west in the evenings.
Yeah, so as we look at that evaluation, we just have to look at the available funding and the overall capital program and how we can move projects around to support these intersection projects as they come forward. I know the Freemanville Birmingham, while it is listed first in the capital improvement program, also really relies on GDOT and improvements at Birmingham Road and Birmingham Highway. We've been working with them on potential improvements at that intersection, too. They've been looking at some alternatives, and they want to try and time anything they do there with our intersection improvement. So hopefully, it's a coordinated effort on on all of those. Highway 9 Bethany Bend intersection is the next project we're working on. It's just had the concept plan approved. If you'll remember on this one, it's a project that we looked at on an individual basis because of the skew at the intersection and some of the problems we're having there, as well as in conjunction with the overall Highway 9 project widening. And so we've come up with two different things in the concept report. We've got some short-term alternatives that we're currently looking at, and long-term. Long-term with the Highway 9 widening, the recommendation is going to be to split that intersection, as you've probably seen in some of our concept reports. Short-term, we're going to be looking at some signal improvements, some turn lane improvements, some turn restrictions. We're actually meeting with GDOT out there tomorrow to see which of those that they can do and fund through the district, and which of those we may have to go out and look at some alternative funding sources. Currently, it looks like they may be able to do all of the signal-type improvements in-house. Turn lane improvements may be something that they have to reach back for a different pot of money to try and do, but we'll go through that with GDOT and hopefully make some improvements in the short term to improve both safety and operational improvements in that area. Next project is our MARTA offset funds. We did the Webb Road sidewalk between Highway 9 and Cogburn Road. The other component was that was to continue Cogburn Road out to its Rhodes Plantation on the Alpharetta side, which is basically the city limits out Cogburn Road. Right-of-way acquisition has been a difficult component of this. We've had a very difficult time obtaining right-of-way and easements from a particular property owner because of the impacts that we've had to do to the property based on grades at that location. And so we're looking at some design alternatives at this point to really redesign that project and minimize those impacts, and try and keep this project within the right-of-way to the greatest extent that we can, so we can move forward with that and continue that sidewalk connection on out to Rhodes Plantation, back over to Hopewell Middle School. Let's see, trail and sidewalk construction. The main piece that we've got on this this year is to continue the trail up from essentially it will go from North Park up to Windward Parkway. We've got a large section of trail that we built with the bridge. We're going to continue that on up the hill and reconstruct that piece of sidewalk in front of the middle school to match our trail section, and that will get us up to Windward Parkway. This is also part of our overall Big Creek Greenway connection that we've been working on the concept study, and so one of the components of that has been that we always want to demonstrate that we are vested in our own project and that we're willing as a community to move forward with doing these projects where we can and have available funding. And so that's one piece of that as we move forward with our applications for additional funding. I think it goes a long way to demonstrating that it's an important project for the community. So, we are getting ready, we've awarded that contract for the survey, and the contract or the survey will be starting that hopefully within the next two to three weeks. The Big Creek Greenway Connection that I just mentioned, another project that we've got going. We're working on finalizing our concept report for GDOT on that particular project. We've got one more stop with the Alpharetta City Council for an update next Monday night. Once we get that, we'll be able to finalize the concept report and submit that to GDOT. Once we've got comments back from GDOT and can understand any of their concerns that we've that they've got, we'll make our next round of updates for all the city councils and the North Fulton CID to present the final concept report and recommendations on that. So, next city council is Monday night with Alpharetta, and then probably three to four months before we get a firm review from GDOT on the concept report, and we'll start making the rounds again.
Carter, is this report going to address different routes then?
It is. It'll have both, again, like some of our others, it'll have short-term and long-term components to it. Short-term, maybe identifying existing connections to the greenway, with long-term, you know, how do you make that big connection over, under, across 400?
Each one of those concepts obviously impacts or affects Alpharetta.
That's correct.
So what is it that Alpharetta's going to discuss or approve next week then?
Not necessarily going to approve anything. It's really just an update to the council to give them an idea about where they are. We've been to their Parks and Rec Commission, we've been to our Parks and Rec Commission, we've presented to you all, we've presented to the North Fulton CID, and so now it's Alpharetta City Council's turn to hear the spiel.
So there are cost projections associated with each one of these different routes then?
There are. There are.
Obviously.
Some greater than others.
Well, for sure.
And that'll be some of the discussion that we go through as we finalize the concept report. Really, what are the best routes based on the input that we've received from the councils, the North Fulton CID, and the public input that we've had on this? So, all that will be weighed into our overall evaluation and final concept approval.
Do we have any reading on how the rest of the council is viewing these different concepts?
Well, I think with any of these regional-type projects, everybody likes them, how they fit into their overall capital plan, and they can move forward with them, probably is the biggest question for all of us to answer. And I think they just really need to see the various alternatives and what really works best and fits into their overall capital improvement plan. And that's kind of the input that we would expect to see or hear Monday night, as well as in the weeks following that, as as they discuss those alternatives with their staff. So, I don't have any specific input from them yet, but I'm hoping they look favorably on it.
Anything we can do to help educate them over there, I think it's to everybody's benefit.
Yeah, and I'll let you know Tuesday morning.
What are we going to educate you, Bill?
All right.
Other next project we've got going are the Birmingham Road bridges. We've got three bridges up on Birmingham Road in between Hopewell and Freemanville, so we're working on plans to replace those bridges. We've done concept studies on each of those three bridges and moving forward with design plans on two of them. One closest to Hopewell Road, as well as the one closest to Freemanville Road, are the two that we're working on right now. The one in the middle is a is a bridge that we've had some problems in the past with overtopping. It's tied to a lake up there that we've in 2009, when we had the big storms, the neighborhood that comes out right at that particular bridge was flooded and couldn't get in and out until the lake went down four or five days. So part of that project is going to be to raise Birmingham Road all the way back into the neighborhood to eliminate that hazard in the future, so much costlier project than the other two, so that may be one that we get on the books as a concept plan and look for sources of funding for that.
Carter, which bridge is '04 and which one's '05?
'04, and actually, I have that wrong on there. '04 is the western one, '05 is the middle one, but we're actually moving forward with the eastern one, so I actually have that incorrectly on there.
So the my 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 question is the as we're the roundabout at Hopewell Birmingham is not going to be completed yet until summer of 2016, but we'll be working on the bridge going into that as well during that same timeframe, so we have two construction projects right next to each other?
Actually reversed, so in 1604, we're working on the western most, the one close to Freemanville, it's a little tiny bridge. And one of the ones that we've we've still got a few out there with these wooden wing walls and abutments that we have some problems with, so we've been making an effort to get rid of those. Cogburn Road one was one of those, Landrum Road was another, and these three on Birmingham are three more. So, we'll be moving to the bridge near the roundabout after that we've done completed the roundabout.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to coordinate all of these projects to the greatest extent that we can. Road reconstruction along Birmingham, we'll be doing some patching up there, but we've tried to hold back on total reconstruction of Birmingham Road until we get these bridges done. I don't know if we're going to be able to do that in this particular case, but we certainly like to bring forward a coordinated capital improvement plan when we do these projects. And with that, the next one is our pavement management program. Bids for the pavement management program, those package will go out this month, so we'll be moving to construction, our road construction late this summer, trying to time that a little bit with the completion of Bell Memorial Park from a staffing standpoint and inspection standpoint. So that will be coming out. Just a quick touch on traffic calming. We'll be looking at some new radar signs, we'll be evaluating these radar signs in the Kennick subdivision, that's the current application that's in, as well as we've got a residential radar trailer that we've been using, the VMS board, our variable message board that we've been using in various locations, and then our radar signs that we have out on our main roads. So what we like to try and do, we've got 12 different locations where we move these radar signs to, and what we've found and really what the research has shown over the years, that the radar signs are pretty effective for the first four, five, or six months that they're out there. After that, they tend to blend into the environment, and people don't follow them as much, so we try to move them around and keep them fresh, usually try and keep them at any given location for three to four months before we move them on, so we do rotate those around. Our NPDS program has just been completed. We passed our 2014 audit, made some minor modifications to the program, but then we're doing pretty good on that. The transportation master plan, again, that's an RFQ that will be issued in May, and hopefully get that up and running by July. As we'll see in just a couple of minutes with some of the projects that we submitted to ARC, this is a project that we did submit to ARC for some additional funding, and so we're trying to coordinate that a little bit, hope to hear back at those in mid-May, because if that is awarded to us, it'll change our scope a little bit, but we can at least through the RFQ process get get a selected consultant on board before we negotiate scope on that. One of the contracts that you'll see coming forward, worked on working on a bridge capital improvement program, a little bit more comprehensive than what we've done in the past. We've selected three bridges that represent some of the normal problems that we have on some of our other bridges, and we're going to move forward with a professional consultant to look at a comprehensive safety, structural, and maintenance program on our bridges, and we're going to use these three bridges kind of as an example for the overall program. So you'll be seeing that contract come through shortly for administrative review. Want me to quit? I've only got-
He just flipped another page.
Let me hi- okay, I'll highlight.
Just highlights.
City Hall, we just approved the new south construction for pre-construction services. We'll be moving to schematic design here in May, hopefully have design development in July, and construction documents in November of this year. Done some work at the fire stations. Bell Memorial Park, a little bit behind schedule, probably running about a month behind schedule. Bob and Matt have been working really hard with the contractor to try and get that back on track to the best extent that we can. Quick update on some of the things you'll be seeing soon. Just getting ready to start the artificial turf fields, so you'll be seeing work going on on that, probably two to three months on that particular work. The natural turf fields hopefully be complete in June, plaza in August, and hopefully opening the facility towards the end of August is what the current schedule shows. Again, our ARC projects that we submitted, still waiting to hear back on those, hopefully get some indication on those five projects in the middle of May, with an award in August. Gravel roads, we'll be moving towards those in July with mowing, we've started mowing, and I'll leave it there.
I was just asking, does anyone have any questions?
What else are you doing?
Design is winning at City Hall.
All right, we'll go through this, Carter, and we'll quiz you later.
Just one last thing, maybe next next update, could we hear more? I'd be interested to hear what we're doing with McGinnis Ferry Exchange or what you're hearing.
Yes.
You don't have to do that today.
No, but I will give you a quick notification, you'll see it on your work session agenda. Forsyth County and Moreland Alta Belli will be here next week to give you an update on the interchange.
Okay. And anything with the intersections, because I know we share roads like at Morris, Bethany Bend, Guinness Ferry.
Yes, some of those are included in this project, some are included in the DRI. So Bethany Bend and Morris is an intersection that's being done under the DRI. It is included in the overall scope or study area for the interchange, and they will touch on that.
Okay.
Also, Strickland and Bethany Bend is another intersection that's being done as part of the DRI as a roundabout.
Okay.
So, yeah, they'll they'll touch on the whole scope of that project, and if you have any particular questions that you'd like them to be prepared for, or you think they need some time to prepare for, please let me know this week, and I'll pass those on to them, so they can come with some answers.
Okay. All right, and then our next. We'll move to Parks and Rec with Jim Craig for some quick highlights.
First off, I'd like to just, just like Jim, you look really good in the three-legged race.
Yeah, well, I got to tell you, Karen and I, we we did well, we brought it in solid.
We didn't fall down, that was important.
We didn't fall down. We had a top-five finish in the competition, you know, I was very pleased with it.
When's the video coming? That's what I want to see.
I can't answer that one.
It's easy to have a top-five finish when there's only four teams racing.
You know, Chris, there's times, Chris, there's times less is more, okay? Less is more, okay?
Tonight, maybe one of them. Good job, Karen.
Highlights, Jim, highlights.
Okay, you've got the numbers, if there are any questions on the numbers, please let me know. I already submitted some comments in there, and I want to let you know the status of these invitations to bid. We did receive in the bids for the re-sodding of Hopewell Middle School, Cogburn Woods Middle School, and Friendship Community Park, and very pleased that the low bidder came in $1,200 under what we had budgeted, so we're in good shape there. Submitted a contract to them today, and we'll be presenting the contract to you for your approval soon, hopefully at the meeting on the 18th. Speaking of contracts, we will hopefully have two more for work at Northwestern Middle School. This is a project we've been working on for two years now, and last year we got close, but couldn't make the numbers work, but those bids come in tomorrow, so we're very excited about that, and hopefully we'll have that again for you on the 18th. We have put together a new facility use agreement for our larger programs, soon-to-be larger programs, the ones that are parent-run, and we are negotiating with NFL-YFL right now, and I, again, hope to have that for you for as a contract on the 18th. For those of you who are not aware, Tom Gillum has resigned as of this past Friday. He was offered the job to become the director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Canton. Very happy for Tom, so right now we're 50% down in my department. The exciting event we're going to be having here on May 13th, we are going to be hosting the GRPA North Metro Directors Meeting. We'll have upwards of 30 different agencies represented here in a group meeting- We'll have upwards of 30 different agencies represented here in a group meeting that happens approximately twice a year, and it floats around to different agencies, and this is the first time that Milton gets a chance to, you know, we'll be showing off our city here a little bit to all the different agencies that are coming to represent. You may recall last Veterans Day, Freedom Park, we had had some struggles with the grass there. I'm happy to report that for Memorial Day, you will find a lush green carpet out there waiting for you. Sorry, I won't be able to be there with you, I'll be watching my son get married.
Excuses, excuses.
Yes, and graduate, yes. I do have one small follow-up for you folks from last meeting. You had asked me to look into some ideas for Broadwell Pavilion to notify people that there is some activity there. I've worked with Kathy and Bob, we've come up with something that we think will work. It's a very modest little sandwich board, we can get nice printing on it, and this is reserved for a specific party, and then we can have a whiteboard underneath it to tell folks what we're going to do. And we put it out like a day before the event or day of the event, so folks were aware of what's going on, so we don't, hopefully, the citizens is to come by if they want to use the park, they would see what's happening and respect that. And if that doesn't work, we'll look at another option, but we wanted something subtle but The last thing I'm going to mention here is we are anticipating getting Providence Park soon, and I already have put together an action plan of the first things we do in the first 30 days to try and get the park in a safer condition to be used. We will, we do have some funds set aside for this. We'll be doing immediate fencing improvements. There's a lot of chain-link fence around the pit. Have any of you folks been to the park recently?
That would be illegal.
I actually was.
You're asking us to admit we did something illegal?
Well, no, of course not, but I will tell you, I personally was invited to go up there by Fulton County, and I saw things within the Fulton County escort, things that we would need to improve on, to get some immediate work done. And that's all I've got. If you have any questions?
Any questions, Bill?
Yes, sir. Did I miss something? What's the report on the Thomas Byrd Senior House?
That was in mine.
I guess I missed that one. I wasn't expecting.
So, you're going to crank it up again, is that what you're saying?
Uh-oh. Just open that door back up.
Did you start from the top?
Yeah, we are, we're working through some final issues with the contractor on that particular one, and we hope to have that resolved and hopefully completing that project towards the end of this month.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jim.
Sometime, in June.
All right. Thank you. One next.
Next, we'll move on to Kathy and then Sarah.
Yes, thank you. We have several major initiatives that are tracking through the review process. As you know, last month, we did finish the review of the amendment of the Form-Based Code for both Deerfield and Crab Apple, so we have those initiatives through. Coming up, we, in terms of the Conservation Subdivision ordinance, we are looking to hold, we've held two meetings so far, two informational meetings, we're going to hold three more informational meetings, and we're looking to track through to the Planning Commission in June and for your review in July. And then also in July, as Bill Ross mentioned, you will be seeing the methodology report. The way that's tracking, that will also come to you in July. In June, however, we have, we have things to planning for you in June, and those include the review of the Arnold Mill Corridor Form-Based Code that will be coming through, right now, it appears in June. It can always get deferred along the way, but right now, it's tracking to June. And then, in addition, I've listed at the bottom, there is a rezoning that's coming through, it's a small rezoning of five single-family residences from an AG1 to R2, and also, we've got a use permit for an after-school program at the Morningstar Church. So, you'll be seeing both of those petitions in June as well. That is my report. Any questions?
Any questions for Kathy?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, Sarah?
Hi. First of all, thank you guys again for coming down to Georgia Power and learning a little bit about economic development and what I hope to do for Milton. And to follow up with Councilman Kuntz, you had asked while we were down there where Georgia ranks in relation to other states, and hopefully, it was included in your packet. There was a map that I had, I don't know if it was, if not, I can email it to you, that showed that Georgia is in the top tier, we're above average as in relation to the other states, so about 25% were ranked above average, so that's good. And then, of course, Milton is above average in Georgia. But as far as what I've been doing, I've been just active, getting to know the partners and the people that we work with and letting them know that Milton is open and available for the right opportunities, that we have, we decided the right things that we were looking for. I was, I don't know what the word is, asked to participate in the ARC Millennial Advisory Council, which is just a group of 18 to 35-year-olds who will help dictate the direction that the ARC does for young people in metro Atlanta. The Council for Quality Growth Legislative Luncheons and the North Fulton Council meetings with them, I've been participating with that as far as I'm, I'm the North Fulton Hospital Women's Advisory Board, so getting Milton out there with that, hopefully, Councilman Thurman is going to be getting involved with us there, too. Then just the Milton Business Alliance and Better Together, I helped facilitate a meeting between the two of them to hopefully get them on, working together to accomplish their goals together, better together.
Better together. Working better together.
And then, I was with the mayor at the North Fulton State of the County, which I think was very successful and very happy and upbeat. We had the North Fulton Economic Summit, the Progress Partners is spearheading that on September 23rd at the Avalon. They're going to bring a lot of economic development people, the realtors and brokers from metro Atlanta, to a summit to teach them about North Fulton, what we have to offer, that's exciting, we've never done that before, and that's, that's related if y'all have any questions.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay, thank you very much. Hi, Chris, you got anything else to add?
Mr. Mayor, I don't unless, unless anybody's got questions.
We got questions on anything?
I'm around all week and would welcome a phone caller to stop by if anybody wants to.
All right, I'll conclude the meeting. Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.